Select Board's meeting, March 20th, 2018. In attendance, Chairman Mowgli, Mr. Deedy, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Okay, first order of business is that we have to wish Mr. Fox and Mr. Steinhardt a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to both of you fine gentlemen. We're not saying both. Then we have to take a picture? Okay, we got that done? 5:05, public comments. Anyone? I know there's a huge crowd.
Someone in the hallway, maybe. I don't know.
No, she's here for the appointment.
She has an agenda appointment with Michael.
Yeah, that's your next.
Is Mr. Johnson joining us this evening?
Uh, he is under the weather, so...
Aren't we all?
He will be doing... We will be doing that appointment.
So shall we proceed with that, or shall we proceed with business until 5:10?
No, if you want. You can certainly take them out of order, Mr. Chairman. Both of the people you need for your appointment with the library on the carpet and painting bids are here. Come on up. The last week in this very same room, Michael and Diane and Bobby and I and Rodden opened up the bids and we went through them. We had three vendors. And it's, you know, it became apparent in terms of doing the carpeting and the painting project that there's not enough money to do the whole thing, so we really need to examine which way to do it. And, you know, there is enough money to do the painting in both locations. I did have Bob check into it. We did get a breakdown from the last bidder of what his $40,000 for the painting and the carpeting of the main room breaks down to. And it's like...
Isn't that wild?
I know.
That's just wild.
Yeah, the way the prices are coming in. So, just that $40,478 for the main room, that broke down to $25,0038 for the carpeting, and the painting was $15,440. And then, of course, there was a breakdown for the conference rooms, too. So we really need to decide what we want to do, because you do have the authority under the bid where the pricing of each section of the service is separately, as the town reserves the right to do all, a part of the renovation areas to remain within the available budget, and that is the challenge we have tonight. So, and a big part of the project has to do with painting the ceilings after the replacement of the sprinkler system. So, and, you know, Bob had made sure that he alerted that to us, so... So what's your pleasure, gentlemen? Because we really, it looks like we have enough money to do the painting with one of the vendors. We had three vendors. One of them's out of the price point for everything completely. One of them's within $8,000 where you could, if you were just doing the painting and the carpeting of the main room, and then... Because we have $32,000.
When do we plan on doing this? What's the timeframe? What are you thinking here?
We'd like to get it done before the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah, these bids.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, 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 yeah. Whether it's a week or two isn't going to change anything?
No, I guess I...
How long are the bids good for?
Well, that's just it. I mean, I think the bids won't be good for so long, so...
When are we scheduling our walkthrough of all the buildings?
I sent an email and just waiting to hear back from Board members.
I just think it's a ton of dough.
Yeah?
I think it... Just, we're scheduled to walk through all the buildings as the three amigos, you won't recognize us, and get a heartfelt of all of our issues. And I would love for us to walk through and see where I'm going to spend $40,000 on painting carpet. I meant to get over today, and I drove right by. I mean, just my opinion.
Well, all the vendors have good...
Oh, no, nothing against the vendors or the pricing. I just, I can't spend $40,000.
You're already...
That's wild.
If we're going to go up the bid again, what I'd rather do...
We don't go up the bid. I just wanted to see where we're blowing.
Right. What I would...
No.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to go in the next week or two, yeah, we don't have... You don't have to make a decision on the bids.
Tonight.
Tonight. Let go. But the key thing you want to do is if you can at least get all the painting done...
I agree.
...in the main room and in the conference room. Then at least you'd just be focusing on the carpeting in those two rooms afterwards.
Yeah, I'm not against it at all. I just...
The building was built over a two- or three-year period with volunteers and all that stuff. So it got painted in 1998.
Mm-hmm.
So it's 2018.
Oh, yeah, no, nothing against that. I just would...
It was already in the budget. We already knew we were doing it.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, I just... You don't think that's a ton of dough?
I think it's outrageous.
Thank you.
Because what...
A low bid or the high one?
Well, for one of the rooms, the conference room, the bid from one of the people was $4,000. I said we should all go into the painting business.
There's two of them.
You know, the ceiling's like nine or 10 feet high in the conference room. In the main room, it's like 20 or 30 feet high.
There's two for $4,000 for the conference.
That's why, if we're just doing painting, this first vendor, Artemis, $18.80, you get all the painting done.
Right.
What's the budget? What's the budget you have?
Thirty-two for painting and carpeting. So that would leave us with about $12,000 left over, which can't get you carpeted. You won't be able to carpet any of the rooms of that, but you can take the amount of money that you've been putting into the fiscal year '19 budget planning process of $7,000 and increase that number.
And package that.
Package that and at least get the carpeting done in these two main rooms, but because the, you know, we still have outstanding to do. The director and assistant director's offices.
Right.
And what about behind the circulation desk? That still has to get done, too?
That's carpeted, it's not painted.
What, was that new carpeting?
Yes.
Okay, so that still has to have painting done.
Yes.
I just look at what we did in this building, and I know...
We phased it each year.
I know, but we didn't have professional painters, but we sat there and did block last year, and we started moving things around. We didn't blow $18,000 a vein.
Oh, yeah.
And I know it was us, and I get that.
Right, but the primary part of this thing, the big part of this thing, is the open areas where we have the big stacks.
I got it, I got it.
Bob Johnson did say, like, the conference room, he said his staff could take care of that. But the big room where you'd have to put up scaffolding and do all sorts of stuff, he said that he says his staff couldn't do.
So if we gave you the $16,350, we could get the main room of the library done. Bob's staff could do the conference room, and then we'd still have about $16,000 left towards...
Well, I think if you're bringing the guy in, you might as well let him do both rooms, because Bob's people will still be helping them do other parts of the project, and he doesn't have full staffing these days.
Okay, just asking.
We table it for a week, so I can... I just want to go get tortured down at the library for a couple hours. That's... I'm sorry. I'm sure you got there today.
And the other thing to realize is it's the columns. It's not just the walls, it's the columns. Over the years, chairs have been hitting them, they've dug into them, so there's...
And isn't it prevailing wage, too?
Yeah, no doubt.
So that's 30% increase right there.
Yeah.
You know, so, is holding it up a week isn't going to break it?
No.
That's why I was... Yeah, that's why I asked. If you told me I want to paint in a week, I'd vote tonight.
Once you, or, you know, decide who you want, then we have to sit down and have a meeting to go over when what their schedule is, what our schedule is.
Yeah, once your award is...
Oh, absolutely.
Right, there's the meeting after the award and before the... The vendor would meet with Diane.
Yeah, we're still a month away from ending that.
Right, right. But the key thing is, a lot of this also goes toward the fact that it's finishing up the work that was done on the sprinkler.
I understand.
And what were you thinking about timing this, Diane? After school gets out?
No, because that runs into...
The last few days?
Well, one person wanted the main room closed for six days to do it. So we'd have to work out of the children's room. We could do that, because it sounded, he said, the public, so I'm assuming that we can be there, and then we can use the children's room.
It all depends upon which vendor you... They'll work out the logistics to make sure the library's still operating.
I'd like it done, like, in May, before we get ready for summer, reading a really good...
Yeah, but this is... This is March. You cannot hold the bids this long.
Right.
But you never know.
No, I mean, we can do it anytime. Yeah, May would be the latest I'd like to get it done. I don't want to go into June.
Right, you want it done by May. By end of May, you want this done.
I would like it, yes.
Gotcha.
So we're going to hold off a week?
If you don't mind.
Motion to table for one week.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can come back.
Lose my mind.
We can come back with Marvin and Hudson.
Yeah, no, I got a project, Marvin.
You may have to pay your overdue fines.
He doesn't even have a card.
He do have a card.
No, he does. He said it was... Oh, no, you had the stolen one, right?
I guess it's got the little... No, it's not valid anywhere.
No one's phobia it isn't valid, or it is. So there. How do you know?
Because we delete everybody every five years if they don't lose their cards.
I'm all done then, too. I have one.
Which delete? I got a lot of aliases.
Yeah, right, which Jody?
After this week, I have several names. All right, sorry.
We were steaming like a demon here. All right. Payroll, acknowledged payroll warrant, 1-8-2-3, dated March 19th, in the amount of $204,925.18. Minutes, regular session of 3:13.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two sets of executive sessions, so... And they're in your meeting chair mail. So there was... We'll need to collect those at the end. So session one was at 6 o'clock? Or was the earlier session?
Thank you. Oh, that's all your meeting, okay. Make a motion to approve, March 13th, executive session.
Session one?
Yep.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And session two?
Session two. I'll make a motion to approve, session two.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Send them down. Eck. Now I gotta get this phone. Okay, item 1A is from Susan Kaczynski. "I would like to amend the 2019 Southwick Cultural Council budget. Show a request for $3,000 for additional performances at the Summer Music Series at Wally Park, Summer 2018, as per our budget hearing on Saturday, 3:10:18." Discussion?
I think I'm not sure where that money, that money would be left after the painting bids. They needed to make a donation there.
I checked all the couches in Town Hall. I did not find $3,000.
I think there was, might have been a little misunderstanding when I said that I would put forward in front of the board, select board, perhaps that we could donate some additional funds from the gift account when we got closer...
While we're sharing, friend.
Closer to the summer concert series. I didn't mean for them to make a request out of the budget. So maybe we could just relay that to Susan?
Sure. So take no action.
So you haven't arrived at a number from that gift account?
Right, because I think that, you know, this is just because I have two brothers in the Rotary. People are coming forward. People are being very generous, donating money so they can have additional concerts, so...
So you're still... So you may end up doing it, but you want to hold off to see what the better number...
Right, right. I mean, if the Rotary raises enough money, you know, we can approach it from there.
Approved nomination of animal inspector to Mass DAR, which is the Department of Agricultural Resources.
You just need a motion?
I think so.
He's just nominating... He just wants us to nominate with Tracy right now. Do it every year.
I'll make a motion to nominate Tracy.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have to sign this? He's going to yell at me shortly.
I think it works better when she wasn't here, because I would just put it on this side.
I know, that's what I was doing, see? And then you fold over.
I'll do that next week. She's going to be out recovering.
Oh, okay, then we'll try that again, but that worked really good. Is it?
Well, that's the way we used to do it.
Right.
Till I got here.
Certificate of appreciation for Mary Jane Connolly, her signature, for her achievements, dedication to Towne Southwick from the Council on Aging Board for the last 11 years. We just signed this. Okay, approve, Southwick Fire Department Deputy Fire Chief, job description and posting.
Right, that's a confirmatory follow-through in your meeting last week with the Labor Council, the fire chief.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to sign that one?
Sure.
Southwick Police Department donations. This morning, this is from Chief David Ricardi. He had the pleasure of receiving two, a $250 donation from Richard and Joanne Silverman from Homestead, Florida. They made a donation as a memorial gift in honor of Thomas Barwakowski, who was a resident of Southwick. They requested their donation be used to defray the expenses associated with training the newest member of the Southwick Police Department General. He's asking the board to approve the deposit to the K-9 gift account. So I need a motion to accept same.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Let those groundhog stay.
And then we have the next one, how we keep this parade going, from an anonymous donor, Ms. Alberta. This is her third donation of 2018. It's a $25 donation to be used for the Citizen Police Academy. I need a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Capcom recommendations.
Yeah, the town bylaw requires that this report be filed with the Boards of Selectment and Finance Committee by March 15th, and the committee met last week, did their final reviews, and Chairman Deedy's group facilitated all the necessary votes, and has filed the report that you see before you.
It basically says we feel that we think they're good ideas and should be funded. By no means that I think about where the money would actually come from.
Fair enough.
Good luck.
So you'll have to take these into consideration when you go through your budget work session for yourselves and your reconciliation meeting with the finance committee.
Southwick Open Space Plan Update.
That was something that we've been carrying on the Selectment's Goals and Objectives list, because it is, it's a process that has to be undertaken to update our current plan. And it usually takes a couple of years to do that, and it is something that is necessary so that you can apply for certain types of grants in the future, especially grants such as the one that you have for the North Horn Run.
Ah.
So it is, it is something that's important, it's to be taken seriously, and you are going to have to start the process to assemble the right people and undertake the update.
Didn't Pioneer Valley Planning Commission work with us the last time?
I believe...
Under the technical support?
Yeah, and I don't know, I think the technical support grants have only been used for targeted policy decisions of the state now, which could be housing-related ones. So, but if you want, we could ask them what... You're still going to have to create a committee to do it.
Uh-huh.
But we'd have to bring in the Conservation Commission, and then other people usually end up joining the, this ad hoc committee to work on it. It's all prescribed in the handout, the different groups that are represented on it.
Okay.
But if you want, we could get clarification from the Pioneer Valley.
It says to your RPA.
That would be my, you know, if we can do that, because that worked out very well the last time.
So do we have to publish a, or request the form that said committee or something like that?
You do at some point. You know, you might want to meet with the Conservation Commission to have that dialogue, but in the meantime, we can reach out to the Regional Planning Agency and get an idea whether or not they'll, they can do it under a local technical assistance grant, or if it would have to be a fee-based service.
Okay.
But it is something that will have to be done.
Yes. 9A is a FYI, State Senator Don Humison, Western Mass Legislators Pancake Breakfast, Friday, March 30th, 9 to 11.
So that's a week from Friday. Does any member of the board want to go? So that we could... We need to R S VP his office.
I'll have to check my calendar, I'm not sure.
I always say I go, and I never do.
I went last year.
Did you make it?
Yeah, it was, it's short and sweet, but unfortunately, this is Good Friday this year, and I'm going to be tied up, you know?
Did you have to wear a suit?
No.
I can go.
Definitely not.
I can go. I don't have to dress up, I can go. I can get in and out of there.
All right, so, Joe's in. I'll check my calendar and come right back.
All right, we'll go.
There you go.
Two amigos.
Perfect.
What's, what's good is I was harassed quite a bit about, at a particular time, I think, a lot of people talking about how Southwick was on the front page of the newspaper, and I was able to say, we were off the front page of the newspaper, and now, you know, East Long Metal was on the front page of the newspaper, so it...
We got a week to get back to the front before...
It was payback, you know, you know?
We got connections. We could probably stay off the front for, by next Friday.
Yeah, we let you take our picture.
Yeah, yeah.
You get combat pay for that. Three one-day liquor licenses for the art show, 4:27, 28, 29.
I got our liquor licensing agent, Landis', recommendation today, so...
What did he say?
He said he doesn't have a problem with any of it. They met with him, showed him the drawing, where they're going to have everything, hours. He has no problem with it.
Friday, 5 to 9, Saturday, 12 to 5, Sunday, 12 to 5.
So is this a step up, then we have...
Yeah.
Used to be one time, now they want it all three.
Used to be Friday nights.
This is a rough crowd, too, you know, these artists.
It is, it is. And is it all alcohol, or is it just beer and wine?
Just beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
So we'll cross out that all alcohol, then.
Do we prohibit gang colors?
I'd like to, you know...
Well, you can't, too, because you don't know what's on their paintings.
It depends on how you look at it, right? For the color, you wouldn't know. Have you seen some of the paintings?
I have.
They're really nice, some of the stuff is really nice. It is, it's really nice.
I work with it every day at his house.
Jesus, I know.
Oh, do you?
Every day.
Oh, I didn't realize you were a donor.
Well, I just write the check.
Are you able to write it off, because it's a nonprofit?
No, no.
We're simply referring the board to possibly...
Anyhow, before we have to rehash this, we'll make a motion for this.
I'll make a mo... I'm a little nervous about three days, but I'll, we'll have to watch and see how it plays out. I'll make a motion for all three days.
I'll second it.
And what about waiving the presence of a police officer?
Oh, you see that request?
I guess so. I'll make a motion to waive it.
I'll second it.
Reluctantly, all in favor?
Aye. Make sure they submit their 501(c)(3) form with this. I don't see it on the application.
Oh, I will.
Okay. Seasonal licenses, Edgewood and Mo's.
And Mo's.
Mo.
No signing or anything of that. I'll take, just take your vote, if you don't mind, please.
Good to see Edgewood is opening up. Yep, there you go.
Yep. The law does very well with you.
Yeah, for Mo's and for Edgewood.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Definitely not signing, just handing them down. Little Red Riding Hood.
She'll be coming in front of you, by the way.
Market A, the old area.
She'll be coming in front of you, by the way, for a change in the serving purposes pretty soon. Been a very big change, possibly a change in hours. She's been to see Landis', she's just filling out the paperwork.
So this is from Wayne Patnau.
Just an update on the Class II license where Bragadi's used to be. He wants to hold on to the license until sale goes through with the company he's going to sell to, which is the lawnmower. I guess if it doesn't go through funding one way, they do have funding another way, so he just doesn't want to give up the Class II yet.
He wants to make sure if the buyer's financing, it's already been permitted through the planning board, but if the buyer's financing falls through under his A and B, he still has the ability to have another car license.
The license stays with the property for...
I think it's two years. The building inspector will have the say on that, so I just want to be very careful with this. We don't have any say in that matter, because it's a, it's a land use issue.
A special permit stays with the property. Right, this is a liquor, this is a...
I understand that, but if a use is abandoned for a certain amount of time, you lose the use, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming use in the zone...
Yep.
And it's within 1,000 feet of another one, so he may not get it back if this was four years later.
Right.
We can't commit to say, oh, sure, sorry, it didn't work out, and now you own it again.
But I think he knows there's a time.
I just want to be clear, for the record, that's not, we could say, okay, we get it and we support you, but we can't waive whatever the zoning...
You can't sit there with it, you mean like a pocket license.
Well, because of the nature...
It's not even that. It's any use, it, it, this has nothing to do with the car use.
Well, this is a use. Yours is a license. Yours is an actual license.
Right, but we can't issue a license if there's no use, so that's how it goes.
Well, they're pushing to do this anyway because of the nature of the business.
No, I think it's great. I wish them the best. I hope they do well. I mean, I know...
And he's got a couple sources of funding, so.
The name of one of the gentlemen, uh-
And that was the intent, Doug, that was the intent of the planning board, was to reduce the number of class two licenses along the court.
And we have, and, and this is continuing along that way.
Gone from like twenty-five down to seventeen.
I know Mr., um, I actually know Mr. Matsko from, from town, and, uh, I know, I'm not familiar with Mr. Judd, but great, I wish them all the best and success in their new business. Check. So are we doing this today, or is this on-
I wanted you to sign it today.
Okay.
And then you'll be doing it, you'll be issuing it on the fourth. When I do the ceremony.
Okay. So this will be, oh, so this is just, you just need this for suitable for framing, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Got it. So this is that we, uh, we will be declaring April 2018 Donate Life Month, and, um, this year, um, April third, when we have our ceremony here, we're also gonna ded-, uh, declare that day as Donate Life Susan A. Sanders Day in our town. So we need to sign this, so that it can be framed and ready for that.
You'll also be given your donation check.
Have you contacted her, does she need any help?
No, she's all set.
Has Pastor Bar been invited?
Um, she was gonna contact him after we hung up. I told her about his, you know, retirement.
Is there other new business before the board this evening?
I don't think I, I don't know, no, I'm-
Sir?
No.
Good. Old business. Um, CRC meeting, still scheduled for seven o'clock, and bringing him-
And she just sent me a-
Him, and you're bringing me a spare vest. Got it?
She just emailed me as a bit of a fact this afternoon and said, how wonderful that the chairman's coming, and he'll have a lot of-
Yeah, while they're sharpening their knives.
Questions and answers for you.
What time is that meeting, Cindy, on the-
Seven o'clock. On four, ten.
Lot of questions?
Okay, so-
They're gonna do questions and answers, they can't leave-
We would be holding, we'd be holding a meeting ahead of that, right?
So much for coffee.
Is that the Thursday?
Sure, as they say, start without.
So we'll schedule the meeting earlier.
Yeah, for six.
Yeah.
And, um-
March twentieth.
Related to that, I have a meeting day after, it was originally supposed to be tomorrow, but it was been rescheduled to Thursday with the first selectmen of Southfield. For a Congress, no, it was originally gonna be tomorrow, now it's gonna be this Thursday.
Oh, good.
Yeah, just to kind of-
Great. Lake issues in general?
You know, see how it's going, check on the status of their militia, and talk about them.
Well, there was that concern about, you know-
Show me.
The LPP.
The LPP.
Not necessarily being able to levy fees against people from another state.
Correct.
Which is old news that Russ and I had gone through with a different first select-
Correct.
It depends on who happens to be in office down there at the time.
Right.
Well, so far-
Are you bringing pictures of our wall we wanna build, or?
No, we're not building a wall over there. We're just gonna put a toll booth-
Toll booth, that'll work.
At their beach, right? As soon as you go two feet in the water-
That's it.
Pass the toll.
Change.
Okay. Just kidding.
Did we figure who's gonna go to the BEA, 'cause they need to RSVP that?
What's the date on that?
Eleven.
Right there, the eleven, Wednesday.
If there's no speaking involved, I can go.
They usually have a couple certificates they hand out.
Uh, that's fine, I, if I have to, I will.
I'll go.
Okay, he can go, I'll just-
And you'll go.
I'll be the sidekick. I get to wear the vest that day.
I'm, I'm bringing the flowers.
Sure.
So you're working.
Every year.
Are you staying?
But I go earlier, and then I disappear. Yeah. So no, I will.
I'm sure there is.
Well, if you buy them at Home Depot, then you bring them over there. I don't know, I don't know what's left for the light off.
April.
Uh, no update on that, uh, from the, uh, the committee or the, um, but the town attorney is aware of the need to draft the Warren article.
Yeah.
He'll just word it in a-
We do need to keep that-
He'll word it in a generic fashion.
Because I did have some queries about that from, um, from the third estate.
Some people are willing to buy it, though?
No, they just, why is this on our agenda tonight? And I said, we've been talking about it for a month, and this is-
Oh, yes, this is the one.
We just wanna get, but we do wanna get the historical piece in play, so when we get the Warren article, that if we're able to do this, that we can keep moving this-
Yeah, and, and I think the need be, Ben could word it generically to make sure that that issue would be accommodated for.
Will they interest in buying it?
No.
No.
The third estate, the press. Uh, fiscal year nineteen budget.
Yeah, at some point we'll need to do, uh, the finance committees have their work session next week, and so you're gonna need to have yours within the next couple of weeks. We just bring the pizza.
Yeah, work session, right?
The pizza or the pizza, or we bringing a pizza?
Oh, last time we had him in charge of pizza, it didn't happen, so we'll have to, we'll, we'll-
Get on top of that.
We'll get the pizza.
Right, and this, and Carol will be, you know, she is coming to, back to town to serve, so she, her should be available to assist the law in that effort.
Oh.
So do we need to set a date for same now?
Uh, not now, but I mean, I'd like to get some dates, uh, from you guys, if you could, I don't want a firm date right now, but I do, you might even wanna give me the dates when you're not available, and then we can just fit it in the other way. But I don't need it right now, but we do need to, to be prepared to do this, because at some point, the, uh, you'll need to reconcile the process with the finance committee, and we'll need to create the finance committee handbook.
Right, because we're not that far away. March is about dead.
Yeah, well, usually we do that, usually we finalize everything by the first and second, second week in April.
Today's the twentieth of March, yeah. So, fourth, fifth, sixth?
Yeah.
Yeah, of April?
Right, this Tuesday is, Easter is celebrated on a Tuesday, town hall is closed, or is-
No, I don't know why that's-
I don't know why that-
That's in Canada.
Okay.
Well-
Well, they're close in Canada, that's what I was talking about, eh?
No phone calls.
Well, all of our Canadian-
That would leave you the third, fourth, the, Russ, you wanted, you were talking about the sixth on a Friday night?
Eh, I, I, I'm just-
Was not. How about the third?
All right, so you're in here somewhere.
Yeah, right. I mean, we have a regular-
And that's your work session, then you'd need to think on the next one.
Right.
So why don't we just have, can we not have a meeting the third and make it a work session? The third?
Yeah, sure, if you want.
Why don't we do that, but, but the following week, we got-
Ah, shit, can't do that, so-
Well, you could, you don't have anything else on the agenda.
No, but the third is the donate life.
You could do the donate life and then do your work session.
Do the work session.
No, 'cause you're not suits and ties at the work session, you are for the donate life.
Well, I've seen somebody else changing their office.
Why don't, why don't we do it the fourth?
All right.
You know? Because the following week, you know, we got things going on the tenth and the eleventh, right?
Yep, yeah, we just did the-
So we'd have to meet with the finance committee on, like, the ninth or the twelfth?
Yeah.
And I can't do the twelfth.
Yeah.
And the thirteenth, we have something.
Friday the thirteenth, that's correct.
Yeah. Huh. Four, four. Bad Chinese.
Could have instead of pizza, leftover-
Not the twelfth.
Not the twelfth?
Definitely not the twelfth. Or we can do it the tenth with the finance committee, right?
I thought you had-
No, because you-
Oh, we have the, yeah, we have the thing, tenth, eleventh, so it's gonna have to be the-
Ninth.
Ninth, or, yeah.
Or the following week.
Yeah, we gotta, yeah. 'Cause then the following week-
It's Christmas, uh, vacation week for the kids.
Good point. And then the week of the thirtieth? And the week of the seventh? I'm out of town.
Yeah, I'm out of town here, going to Virginia to put some of your-
Nice. So, and then the following week is town meeting, so, geez.
Yeah.
Where does it go?
Any other old business?
Well, I think we have one announcement that I think is, uh, very important, is the, uh, the release of a lawsuit that was filed in federal court by former, uh, DPW Director Jeff Neese, who left the Town of Southwick, uh, five years ago, filed that lawsuit, uh, and, uh, I'd like to commend our insurance carrier by standing firm on frivolous lawsuits, which this was, and, uh, stood firm, and, uh, Mr. Neese withdrew the, uh, lawsuit with prejudice, so this thing is-
What does that really mean, though?
Nightmare's over. He can never bring it, never bring it forward again, it's done.
Under that scope?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's done, and, uh, why this was ever filed, five years after somebody left, I have no idea, but, uh, um-
Can we bill him for our time, and we still probably spent-
Well, I mean, it, it's gonna cost the taxpayers, because we have a deductible under our insurance, you know, but we don't have that exact figure yet, but, uh, so it did cost, cost us some, some money, but at the same token, uh, if we allow frivolous lawsuits to go forward, it's gonna cost us more in the end, so.
Yeah, I know how you stop it, and it's great that the, uh, 'cause I thought for sure that it'd go the other way, but it's great the insurance company had enough.
Right. Right.
It was nice.
And, uh, you know?
So we just send them the bill, just, that's all, get paid. We'll just run it off the five grand.
That is excellent news.
That is great news.
It is great news.
It's about time something finally goes into our corner, most because of that strong chairman ethical, Doug Moe.
I think it is because of the chairmanship, you know, and I'd like to-
I, I, cut it out.
Stay seated, really, it's okay. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, no.
For that, you know, the way you drive the ship, you steer it through that fog and the storms.
You spelled ship wrong.
I did, that's, that's close. I forget my wife's dessert.
Okay.
With a bulletproof vest.
So we are gonna go into, do I have a thing to read for that?